Okay, since we're on, I'll just go ahead and start. Call order is, you'll say at 6:30?
6:30-ish.
Okay. Jeff informed me that Craig resigned tonight. For the record, we have that in the minutes now. We are down, we have no associate members. So if any of you even know anyone who could possibly be interested in those positions, I'd be sure have them contact the town office because we need to do some recruiting here. I'll ask Denise to put out the message that we have those two positions open and hopefully it can get someone to respond. And Randy, you know, seem to know a lot of people, maybe you can, you know, work too, that would be very helpful. Okay, need a motion to approve the minutes of January 25. Thank you, done. Is there a second?
No second, this is Mark.
Okay. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Okay, hearing then, all in favor? Drink Mark.
Aye.
Robin?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried, approved. All right, so Chapter 48 for site review. I'm trying to think where we left off, Melanie, do you remember?
I didn't think we started.
Yeah, we did.
We definitely did, I'm trying to find.
We like up to page 12 or something?
I think we went.
There's no page numbers on this. Did that call us? Nope, that's all right. I think, I think we got up to at least limitations of approval, didn't we?
We did, because I have a comment there for edit, so I know we definitely got up to that.
Oh, that's right. Okay, and...
What page do we have?
We're at section, just at 484-128 revisions.
484...
So that's the fourth sheet.
128? Four.
So fourth sheet of paper in. Okay. So, and I think our, really talked about fines and so on, that that was already in, I believe, somewhere about... Okay, this one, H2, or letter two, number two, was about granting up to two or six month extensions. I think, we talked about fines if not finished, and I think that shows up somewhere else in our, they have to reapply. It's like, we don't want this going on forever.
Yeah.
And if they didn't get it done, they need to pay and reapply, I'm not sure about that.
I believe we've added that to post-approval activities at the very kind of edge.
Okay.
That's in Article 9. That wasn't there before, I don't think it existed, but I did add it into...
Oh, right. Oh, I have it duplicated from 484-11. 484-11. That's 484-11. I probably wrote this, written that down long. Oh, it just refers back to the limitations of approval. So it was duplicated already, so we'll get back to that then. Okay, so Melanie, do you want to continue on here, starting with 484-128?
Sure. Again, these are just kind of minor changes going down through room here, going through appeals. Continue on to the next page. Again, just looking at these numbers, I'm gonna have to go back through and adjust them. I had them highlighted, the different reference chapter numbers. I didn't go through and change all those yet in case we wanted to change or add any more additions.
Right.
So these next three sections. For site plan requirements, free application requirements, I wasn't thinking we needed to change much. One thing that Joel did bring up today was, it does take a long time administratively for you guys to go through the application checklist in person. That is something as your planner that I can do ahead of time to check for the completeness of the application before the meeting and write a letter that it is complete to the board. I do that for Scalavio and I do that for Halliwell. So that could be something to save time in the meetings, if you want to consider that and put that into site plan review. That's something we can do now, so if the board would like that. It's relatively quick process, it's...
That is a wonderful idea.
Yeah.
Anything to speed the process up is a good thing. I bet people can't believe that it takes too long already.
Yeah. It essentially would be that, I don't know if we, I forget if we have it in here, but it would require that applicants either have to send everything electronically, you would just forward me the application, or I live right down the street, I can just pick up the office.
Right out the road, you may not be you, you might move on to something else, have somebody else.
Exactly, so I think that's why it makes sense to have them required to send it electronically also. So if the board's open to that, I think that's the best idea to help kind of make things more efficient.
If possible, I think on electronic, I will be cases.
Of course.
Robin, Mark, what do you think?
I agree with Mark on the idea.
Okay, so is that something we, we can just put in, we don't have to vote, just have you put it in?
I can put it in, yeah.
Okay. So where would that go?
That would go in the application process, I'm not sure if we've already done already. No, I think we're, that would go back into the application process, so we kind of skipped that already, that's back in 484-107. So it could go back to 484-10, so 10. So where it says D within 20 days after the planning board determines the application's complete. So C, the planning board is scheduled next June, so it'll determine whether the application is complete. I would adjust that to say the planner would determine the application is a complete and send a letter within X amount of days.
And so would you be verifying, like, like on our checklist, when we read out every SR1, we go through every, would you be checking all this whole list?
Yes.
Just SR1 and 2?
Pretty much. I'm pretty sure the entire checklist. I want to make sure that all of those requirements for the application are there, so by the time it gets to you guys and you're not... Yeah.
Yes.
And, right, because then that way we could...
SR3 can be done by you, I mean, yeah.
I think pretty much the whole checklist.
I think, in Scalavio, we used to waive, like, the reading of this, because I think Chris Huck at the time would say, yes, this is done. We just waived 1, 2, 3.
Right, but we since then found out we need to read those, and even Joel said that we should read each of them out.
I believe that's, that's not the application itself, that is the standards.
The standards, right, right.
With the application in Scalavio now, I determine the completeness and I send a letter out before the board sees the application generally.
So the pre-app for, okay, 200.0, I've already completed the pre-app, and I would just bring it in and say, "Pre-app tall complete," and you know.
Essentially. I mean, if there's, it's different if it's a large application, and there may be things you would require extra.
Right.
In that case, I may be able to predict that, but most cases not, so.
So it would really be the pre-app requirements, the site plan submission requirements, the site plan requirements...
You know, like SR4.
And supporting documents, and the waivers.
Yeah. I want to determine if the waivers are allowed, you guys would still determine if the waivers are approved, but...
Right, right. And so then, we go through the criteria after that, so...
SR6 is, yeah.
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 The standards, yeah, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent. But that still does not, even though you're doing it though, the board is still responsible for verifying that. I mean, you know, ahead of time, everyone can say, you know, be expected to have read through this or looked at the materials and ready to determine that yes, you know, and accept your findings on that. So, yeah, okay.
Yep, that would be great. So back to 484-16, again, the real changes. The only change I made, next change would be 484-17 to the fee changes. And it's just stating, it was like explaining the coverage of the cost administrative review fee.
These are all set by the select board.
And I thought that paragraph was really good, the way it's sorted. And evidence of payment of the fee must be included with the application.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Next changes were under criteria to be considered 484-18, I added section N. Site plan must be provided for a system of pedestrian ways within the development appropriate to the type and scale of development. So this just is talking about any sidewalks. This mostly pertains to larger developments, but it essentially talks about connecting any sidewalks within the development to the existing sidewalks within the community. I think especially since Madison already kind of has some lack of sidewalks within areas, if any large developments are to be built, it will kind of force them to connect them.
Is there a standard for the sidewalks in Madison? I haven't been to her, but I'm scared of it.
Okay, let me look. That's a very good point.
Because those lay down a tower and say it's a sidewalk and there's no standard to the sidewalk.
I don't think we have any standards for sidewalks.
I think Jay would be our expert on that.
Well, we did, I think we're all five feet wide.
But we probably need something.
I don't think it's, I've never seen it in writing.
I can find something, I'm sure a community near us has something decent written up that I can throw in there.
Okay.
Even if it's stealing from Halliwell or somewhere that has something.
Yeah.
Okay. That's a very good point, though. I also added section O, the proposed development will not result in undue adverse impact on the existing use and quiet enjoyment of properties both immediately budding and within the neighborhood of development.
Excellent.
And then I added those kind of substandards just to clarify what that means, kind of to back it up in terms of post court, so. Again, that's just basically coming from some developments we've had since I've been on. Next, buffers and screenings, 484-21, I added section A, .5. Where there's potential safety hazard to children is likely to rise, a physical barrier sufficient to deter small children from entering the premises must be provided and maintain a good condition.
I just want to mention, I like number, well, number four's been in there, sites without site, storage of materials, stacks of inventory junkyards. I thought that was, that's already been there in this, but I thought that was really good, and I'm gonna make a note because I want to bring that up later. Okay, go ahead.
Might you consider from a legal standpoint changing where a potential safety hazard to an attractive nuisance? Because by main law, it's considered an attractive nuisance.
Perfect, okay.
I.e. swimming pools, playgrounds, animals.
Will be. So, lessons pages just kind of typos, or not typos, just kind of adding back in wording. The next change, that's substantive.
Robin and Mark, remember if you have anything to say, certainly interrupt, I can't see you, so...
Yeah, we'll speak up.
I have no problem speaking up.
I think the most interesting thing else I saw, even that's all pages, was just adding in the...
Yeah, if you go to 484-53, several pages ahead, Article 9 is new, and it covers post-approval activities.
Just a moment. I want to go back to 484 signs. What number is that, 484-32?
This is just an aside, but I finally realized why the sign is so small.
Why?
Because that's the sign ordinance, right?
Well...
Well, that's actually what they proposed, because they proposed that before.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nope.
I thought you guys just forced them to have it that small?
No, that was before us.
Okay. I just want, okay, I want to bring up here about signs, is that we had revised the sign ordinance, which is actually part of the site review ordinance, and I guess it was approved and it's ready to go, right? But this is, and I double-checked this, I believe item A1, beginning with there should be no temporary promotion signs, banners, screamers, or placards, he directed suspended, posted, et cetera, et cetera. That was omitted from, and this ordinance, I don't think this sign ordinance that's here is the new one.
Okay.
Right, it's not the new one. So you need to have a new one to stick in here, but that part, the rest of that paragraph basically was omitted from our revision, and that needs to go in the revision.
Okay, got it.
So... So we'll have to probably relook at that.
Okay.
Okay, I made myself a note too, so, okay, so... Melanie, if you, you were at which one, 484-53?
55?
Yes, 53. It's Article 9. Can you actually find it? Oh, now there's 50, okay, there we go, yeah. It's the Article 9 post-approval activities, it's the next to the last, okay, it's the third sheet in from the back.
Sir, we got this number in this page.
I know, I'm so sorry.
Article 9 post-approval activities, is that right?
Oh, alright.
On there.
Gotcha.
Thank you. I just don't like, if construction has not been substantially commenced and substantially completed, I just think that's ridiculous.
Substantially, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I just think it needs to be defined.
Wow. If that gave at least 50% or...
Yeah, generally it has to do with, like, how much money they've spent, or, but I see what you're saying, okay.
Or maybe put it at the direction of the CEO, if it hasn't met, I don't know how you word it, but if it hasn't met the level of completion, expected completion by the CEO at this period of time, sticking a shovel in the dirt doesn't count.
Right, yeah. That's why there should be something more than that, so that they could enforce my officer has something to fall back on, and whatever current ordinance, you don't have 50% of this or 60% of the project completed. Because the whole goal is we don't want some of this illegal project there, aren't done, and...
Right, and it depends on the size of the project. If it's a big, huge project like the school, takes a long time.
Yep, right, yeah.
That's a thing with small projects.
Look at the animal shelter, the animal hospital, you know, it's, it hasn't been a year, but, close.
Yeah.
Now, well, the thing is, part of this, the app can may request an extension too, so that's incorporated in there, so we establish, I don't know if the percentage is the max, I don't know, I don't know much about building, how you can increase...
I think if you're asking, if the individuals are asking for more time, you wouldn't go by percentage, you'd go by time.
It's gotta be other reasons, if someone's gonna have to clear their ideas to find that, that's why.
And at what point would you say, well, we have to come back for second review? Or additional sections?
Right. We have, there's something in there earlier, because we don't have that.
That was for revisions, like major revisions. I think the limitation of approval, I think so if construction has not begun.
Right. Within this specified period.
I was gonna stick a shovel in the dirt.
One of other towns have related to this, you know, or they use the word substantial.
Generally, the word substantial is kind of around a lot, but I can look into it.
I mean, it, it does give you, you know, the personal officer wiggle room there, but, I mean, to me, substantial means that you have done a considerable amount of work, no matter what, and...
Well, definitely throws a gray area over there, and, yeah, I think it could be argued that by the building of, to a court or to whoever, well, you know, we've been in the planning phase, we talked to architect, we've got all this substantial work into this project, but none of which is on the site. So we're just trying to avoid that.
Exactly, I think generally, because I've had a few applications come in and have to reapply because they haven't started work at all. And I think it's generally, that's kind of what communities are looking at, is if you have not put a shovel in the ground yet, and the project, a lot of times those projects have generally changed in design quite a bit. So I think that's what communities are really trying to avoid.
Solar projects, and, well, we had one, yeah, we had one, yeah, so we're just gonna be careful of them.
Exactly, so I think that's really what people are trying to avoid.
I agree.
But, and it can be pain for average homeowners, but again, even then, it is avoiding large design changes that may be impactful.
Yep. Other than that, there's no other changes, I thought the rest was mandatory.
Perfect. I didn't have any other suggested changes besides the one about the application, but I can put that in there. I think everything else, I should be able to get you guys a better draft with page numbers by next week.
Okay, and...
Just one?
Yes, one.
Is that good?
Yes.
So it's back in 484-46, B is on the first line, map requirement.
Do you mean one second?
And it's this old, old language.
You said 484, Mark?
484-46.
B map requirement.
And then B map requirement, yeah.
I'm on the fourth page from the back, I think it is.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
So it's all in that first line, the site plan map must consist of three blue line prints. Is blue line print still something?
What kind of prints are we getting?
I don't know what a blue line print is.
I don't either.
No, we used to have Mylar, and we've taken that, we haven't taken Mylar out, it says on, where is it? SR3, I think. I don't know if that's somewhere.
Mark, do you know what a blue line print is?
Yeah, I think I do. It's what they used to do architectural drawings with, and they used to be recorded in the registry, and nowadays you can't print them out because it just, everything's dark.
What are the, okay, what are the kinds of maps that we get now? I mean, is there...
It's just a...
Black and, black and white.
A 30 by 48 inch, between 1 inch equals 40 feet and 1 inch equals 100 feet, so in between there. The board or applicant may request Mylar copy being provided. The plan must include the following, that's SR3.
Okay. If it's okay with the board, I think it's, is it okay if I go in there anytime it's requested a paper copy, I'll get rid of the blue line prints and put in black and white, but also request it in electronic version as well?
Yeah.
Unpossible.
Maybe black and white isn't right either, because you can do a lot with color on a map, so...
And they did use a lot of color.
I don't remember what the term is, black line, maybe, but it's really just a paper map.
How about three prints?
Yeah, I think I should think of that.
Just take blue line out.
Yep.
Black, white, color.
They can do whatever they want, then.
Right.
Perfect.
Mark or Robin, did you guys have any other comments or questions?
Just, I've got a couple of spelling corrections or the letter A to put in a couple of places. Can I just email those to you?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Under the terminology at the end, for some reason, I wrote, because I can go back and look, I don't know, I made myself a note to expand, so I mean, I'm wondering if we're missing something or from our definitions. So do we have all the definitions that were in there before?
Yes. I can confirm that, though.
I don't know why I wrote that, okay. If I can figure it out, then I will let you know. Okay, does anyone see anything else that needs to be in, committed for change? Okay, so Melanie, is she, you have your, just need to get the sign ordinance, the new one.
Out of the, I get that one line out exactly.
Yeah, do you have, do you have a copy of the new ordinance?
Okay, yeah.
That was stuff, oh, I have, it's a paper copy, believe it or not, I don't know why I don't have the electronic copy.
I can email it to you?
No.
Is the one I sent you the right one?
I hope so.
I hope so, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
And me too.
I'll send it to you.
Okay, excellent. So, now the next one, oh, one is the, what's it here? Mobile vendor. And Melanie gave us...
Do you have copies of that, Jerry?
Did I just hand it to you?
No.
Mobile vendor one?
One from the town of Rundle and one from the town of Coray.
I can't find mine.
I thought both of these were really good. And I remember Jay had some questions about them a while back, I don't remember...
Yeah, what came to mind was enforcement.
And there was also the mobile eating place software, yours guy, which I thought, that came from main health inspection program, I thought that was really interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot more guidelines than I thought there would be, that you're saying already.
Are you kidding? I made additional copies of transportation. Not the vendor? Kidding me?
Do you have a copy of the printer?
What did I?
Do you have any of them, do you have?
I couldn't find them, I went back through my old stock, I couldn't find them. I know we talked about it, but I don't want to have it.
Right, briefly, we didn't even go through these. Okay, because we didn't have a chance to go through them, so. And what do you think is the best way to do this in terms of coming up with our, um.
Well, I drafted one.
Oh, you did, excellent.
I will tell you, this was very quick, I did this in an afternoon, um, and I just took portions of the ordinance that I thought were most compatible with Madison. So feel free to go to town with this.
Oh, this is Louis passing out, oh, excellent.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, Mark and Robin.
I actually, let me share my screen with them.
Oh, that would be perfect.
Great.
One second, guys.
I'll pass these up if you don't see them, take a quick look at them.
Melanie?
Yeah.
I just want to reiterate, I mean it sincerely, you are very good at what you do.
Yes.
Sincerely.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
Yep, I think correct, thank you.
You're saving us a lot of time.
I'm sorry.
Not sure it runs in the family.
She knows that.
Notice I didn't say that to you, Jeffrey. No, you're very good, well, you do too, Jeffrey, you are.
And, yeah, it's really great being able, because I was looking at those, I thought, oh, wow, these are really good, but this one has, this good part, this one has.
CDC.
Yeah.
Responsibility of.
Yeah, LHO.
Yeah.
I mean, because that's really what I was noticing with the things that there is, most of this falls on the LHO for.
Well, I'm.
For the licensing.
The licensing is all done by the state, according to that.
Okay, pretty much, but then we can, we'll get to that, but it seems like the select board can license.
After the approval of the state.
Yeah, pretty much. Okay. Can I say this?
So do you want to walk this through this?
Sure.
And share this with Mark and Robin?
So essentially, I'll just kind of start at the applicability. One thing that was interesting. There's two, there's a few laws that kind of cover this, there's the overall main kind of health laws regarding food trucks and restaurants, but specifically food trucks and trailers. And then there's also a main law, the main lunch wagons law, which is an older law, but that also pertains to like peddlers and people who are selling things from carts, like hot dog carts, things like that. I didn't include that in here, I can't.
Like stand fries, selling.
No, that would be a food truck.
Food truck, okay.
So that would include a food truck slash trailer, so. But I'm just clarifying, I'm only including food truck trailers, but if we want to start including the people on a pedal cart, I didn't because I don't think we'd have.
It will happen anyway.
There's a, there's a guy in Skowhege that has a very small little cart that cooks sausages. In the summertime, sometimes you see them on a supply, sometimes you see them on a tractor supply, and it is not a full, it is like the back of a car, little tiny cart, like a, like a push, like a baby cart.
Right, I know what they are.
Yeah, but so there is a guy in Skowhege that does do it, does a very good thing, sausages are very good, but I don't.
It's kind of, yeah, I mean, it depends, how far you guys want to go.
I mean, that's literally a lemonade stand.
Right.
That's exactly, like, at what point are you gonna start requiring?
A little ten-year-old with a.
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
The boosters organizations, like, again, how far are you gonna go, so I left that out.
Right, you're right.
And again, I'm specifically looking at food trucks and trailers, so.
Yep.
Moving on to page two, I'm just gonna move it down for Robin, so now we're looking at licenses required, so essentially. This is dictating that no one shall operate a food truck or trailer within Madison. Unless they first secure a license from the town, so this is pretty similar to kind of how we've done other licenses for businesses, et cetera. Um, it does require that they get the license through the Madison Select Board, we can change that to just have it be an application, but.
The, the town clerk has the DVA doing business ads, so I wonder if that would be construed as being licensed.
Hmm, right, I don't think so.
And that's only ten dollars.
Well, how are, um.
No, license is permission to, to sell.
Yeah, DVA is just a name doing business, the ass, a long company can be doing business.
Are food trucks required to have tax ID numbers for it, for sales tax, or?
Think so, probably, you assume.
Yeah, I mean, so.
Unless they're not a profit, but.
All the ones that we have in town so far have their licenses, they're displayed.
Well, that's getting a license then.
That's through the state. But I think Madison should give our, a food license to vend in town.
Yeah, and that's essentially what this requires.
I would agree.
And who would give that license, would it be the select board, well, it, it should go to them, I think, someone, let them.
They may say, the select board may say it's the planning board. No, because like a liquor license is the select board, all that stuff is select board, restaurants get renewed annually. Yep.
Our cannabis licenses go through the select board as well?
Yeah, it's a select board, yeah.
So, and essentially, so this just also clarifies that each license will expire thirty-first of each year, December thirty-first. And then they can renew, I think, automatically. So, and then it goes over the display of the license and then the application.
Now, would it go by calendar year or the town year, December thirty-first?
December thirty-first of calendar year.
Calendar.
We can change that to be the towns, but maybe confusing the people? I'm sure.
Calendar year.
Okay.
Calendar year would probably be better because, yeah, there's a lot going on at the town year.
Right, yeah, I think that'd be easier for the town.
Are the other licenses in town by calendar year too? I think Stan's.
I, I think like the legion would be whenever they started, like, say if it was in February, their next year would be in February.
Okay, maybe that makes more sense.
Just like establishing a vehicle license, yeah.
Okay, I'll make that consistent with the other licenses we have going.
And I think the fee should be consistent with like, Fonzo's has to get a food license, right, for other restaurants in town?
I just made the fee on here generic, so I figured the select board decided whatever fee they want to do.
They said refer to the town's fee schedule or licenses.
Yeah.
Is there a restaurant food for town?
No.
I don't know, not that I'm aware of.
Does county get any restaurant fees?
They just got rid of their, wait, no, I don't know.
I don't recall that, I know they have a liquor license for you, but I don't know about food.
They, they don't do food trucks like this, but I can, I can check and see what their restaurant one is, if they have one.
They don't want permanent disadvantage or advantage, should be whatever restaurant is. Yeah, because most of our food carts are restaurants, they go based on.
Yeah.
Well, I would think the restaurants would have a business license through the town.
I would think, but I don't know, but.
State.
You would assume so.
Yeah, and the everything has to have a business license, the marijuana shops have to have a business license, so.
Well, we really don't have any restaurants other than.
No, we did have at one time.
In Madison also pizza. We have, you have. You have Fonzo's.
Fonzo's.
Fonzo's and then Good and Plenty Two out on level one, so, but I don't know.
But those are brick and mortar.
Right, but they're still a business, so they would have a fee, we're not regulating those, we're talking about the fee for this.
Okay.
Should be consistent with those, yeah, should be consistent with the brick and mortar.
We'll have to look into that.
Okay.
I mean, if it's zero, it should be zero.
Right, right.
Thirty bucks, it should be thirty bucks.
I don't believe we have one.
And if not, they should get one.
So going down through the application. Just noting that under G, it does require to have approval issued by Department of Human Services of state of mind. So. The other ordinances I was copying did discuss disqualifying criminal convictions.
Absolutely.
So. Specifically related to motor vehicle, kind of, mostly, it was mostly related to motor vehicle accidents and things as far as operating motor vehicles.
Can't be operating your air, your, the fire while driving.
And again, going on to the next page, so.
But this doesn't say motor vehicles, so you're just saying in general, no criminal.
If you move on to the next page, section seven, it defines what disqualifying criminal convictions.
I guess we jump ahead, okay. Go ahead, Melanie.
I also think I need to add disqualifying criminal convictions to. The definitions.
Sex offense would be disqualifying conviction?
Oh, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, I'll add that, because I think I forgot to add the section to the, I think it should be added into the definitions specifically, so I'll make sure to add that. Moving down to mobile vendor operating standards, I think this is kind of the meat and potatoes of specifically requirements for them. So it talks about kind of opening hours, that the sheriff's office has the right to kind of shut them down or ask them to relocate, um, if they're causing imminent, um, contributing to an imminent public safety hazard. Shall not be permitted on the grounds of any school unless part of a school authorized function not be permitted in cemeteries, town-owned parking lots, or within the boundaries of town and parking lots unless part of a permitted event. And et cetera. And again, requiring them to date of team all state and state licenses.
Alright, okay, so here's where you talk about the motor vehicle license, out.
Now, we can put in their school, school function. Are we gonna? Because the school has, the high school has their own snack bar.
I think that's.
Yeah, but if they, if they wanted to bring a food truck for prom.
Yeah.
They could sit over in the parking lot, bring them in for prom, and let the kids have a hamburger or whatever, if they chose to.
Yes, I think it's just preventing like, against Dan's French fries, just going to show up on a Tuesday afternoon and start selling fries without the school's authorization. You just have to have the school's permission, same thing with the town, no one could show up in the town parking lot and start selling shit without Denise's permission.
Right. Along with food trailers, like the Winslow community covered. That's a trailer and it's full of food, they're not selling it.
No, that's different, that's just, that's food distribution through the, um.
Yeah, I wouldn't count them.
Food covered.
They're also a not-for-profit, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, so I wouldn't count that.
Okay. And I've relocated them, by the way, um, since, uh, one thirty-five, the old Cumbes is being retrofitted or remodeled and, uh. Taylor's has been sold and will be coming for the board on the eleventh, by the way. I've relocated them to the, uh, over on Maple Street, the Baptist Church, the United Baptist Church. And I talked with Pastor Cogan, Pastor Cogan Curtis. And he's all for it, and I talked with Bruce, uh, with the Winslow folks there, and they're all for it, and so in April, they will start going over there. Rest of it looks good, Melanie, picture it.
Hey, John, um, now, do we have an application, does the town already have an application, or?
No, but that's something I could probably work up very quickly.
Yeah, because one of these had an application.
Yeah, I probably just steal it from her.
Around all. And I like the dimensions that were on this too, so it requires a lot of information, the. Performance standards. So, whatever, yeah, that would be great, okay. Okay, are we good to go with this for Melanie? Mark, Robin?
Very nice job. I think it's awesome.
I do too, excellent. And I did not mention that the other ordinance that, I didn't think we'd get through that so fast, so thank you for getting all that work done ahead of time, that's marvelous. So if you have a final draft to us next meeting, then, um, the second meeting of March could have a public hearing, and then that way it can go to the select board. Following the hearing. Right.
So the eleventh of March, which is the second Tuesday. Is that the meeting for the solar and for the restaurant? And I think there's gonna be a.
I think there's gonna be one on the lake coming up.
On the lake coming up.
But not for that meeting?
For that meeting. For that meeting. And then the public hearing would be on the twenty-fifth?
Right, so we have, to my concern is, is, um, so do you have everything you need for that one on the lake, is that gonna take a lot of time?
He'll have it all by then, he should have it by the eleventh, by next week.
Okay, so is that, um.
Providing the permit by rule comes in.
Okay, so that's the shoreline zoning application, right, are you using the new application for Mark, the new form?
I brought the money.
Good, okay, alrighty, now that, oh, that shouldn't take too long, I would think.
No, no, no.
Okay.
It, it's like Don's house, he's tearing his house down, and they'll, you know, writing this English law with a thirty percent of the map, right.
So, but for the solar, what are we doing next meeting, is that a public hearing, did they get everything in and we have a public hearing?
I haven't heard from them yet, and if, if, uh, if they have everything by the fourth or fifth, then the public hearing. Would you want a, a public hearing on the eleventh or the twenty-fifth?
It would be on the twenty-fifth, so we have nothing else to do with that solar?
Other than the public hearing.
Other than the public hearing, right, so.
So that'll be the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so the solar won't be on the agenda for next time.
Right. Uh, solar.
Because then we can have the public hearing and finish the review, um, on the twenty-fifth.
And then. See, I'll be out of town on the twenty-fifth, I'll be back by noon, sort of afternoon, probably back by one or so.
So on the eleventh, we have the restaurant pre-app.
Unless you want to do it right now, I gotta win.
No, we can't do it because it was long and stressful.
I, I could, under any other business before the board.
Need copies.
Man!
We need to review it.
So, the restaurant pre-app on the eleven.
Yep.
Okay, um.
And hopefully the.
And then, so they can come back with the full application for the first meeting in April. Okay.
Yeah, the second meeting in April, I won't be here.
Have we fulfilled what we need to get that town people? Once we approve these and have the public hearing in March for these two things, will we be good for a little bit or is there something else we hold them for so they can...
One more ordinance, which we can do it. That's what I'm trying to figure this out. So, because we have had a chance to look at... When Melanie has the quote "final draft", we need to make sure we review that, go over it, and then officially approve it instead of the public hearing, which I would like to hopefully have...
And we can do that with the...
On March 11th.
Try to make sure there's no changes. I'll try to get these out to you as soon as possible. So if there are any changes, you guys can email them to me. Just don't have any discussion amongst yourselves in email. I'll BCC you all, so we don't do that.
Okay, perfect. Because it'd be great if we could have a public hearing for these on March 25th. All the person would be here, so you guys would have to deal with that.
No problem.
No problem. And then passed, and then they'd be passed on the select board. So, yeah, so those are set, just a quick review by everybody. And I say we get to do that ahead of time and send you the changes. We should be good next week so that we can send it to public hearing.
On the 25th.
On the 25th. So, so next agenda should include these two ordinances.
Right.
Okay. So the other one that we need to be looking at is the short-term rental registration ordinance.
Okay.
And so you sent us the town of Holden, the town of Stonington. I have not read through these yet.
I think Solman has a nice one too.
Who?
Solman.
You know, we probably... I'm sure that's on our drive.
Yeah, Jesse's got it, I'm sure.
Yeah, probably just... Okay. Let me see. Honestly, I can probably have a draft for you guys of that by next week. So you want to add that to the agenda?
Sure.
Okay.
Because the pre-op for the restaurant won't take long and the shoreline shouldn't take long. Assuming everything is all set, then we can, we should be able to get these going. That would be perfect.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I have an eight o'clock breakfast meeting. We're going to call it a breakfast meeting. No, we're not going to call it a breakfast meeting. An eight o'clock meeting over at Good and Plenty for the restaurant to go over everything for the pre-op.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Okay. So if you have these for the town of Holden and the town of Stonington, take a look through those and kind of... Melanie, you have said this so much.
I really appreciate it.
I was getting frantic here because we need to get these ins to the select board and be able to get these on the warrant, so... Okay. And is there any new business? Apparently none, okay. Oh, yes, I do, I do. Or maybe it should be other business. I'm not sure where it should be. But going back to the site review, when there, you know, there shouldn't be any garbage and so on stored on site. Yes. On 201, the one next to, the storage units next to Levonville, or what is, which is now R and B, right, that storage facility. There is, for the snow, you can, a lot of it's covered right now. There is a lot of trash in the back of the property there. And now there's even a camper back there.
At the...
At that storage.
Storage.
Units, yeah. And there's not supposed to be anything out, you know, in that parking area. It's one thing if they have it open and they have the items out that they're selling, but I mean, it's just all of the stuff piled back. So you might want to take a look at that.
Oh, I guess I'm...
Get in touch with the owner. I mean, driving by...
Working at a different one in my head.
That's the only one.
Take a left towards my house and it's right down the left.
Oh, across the street from the old R and Bs.
Yes.
Or, okay.
The current R and Bs.
The current R and Bs. You got mine, Levonville.
Right, which is now R and B.
Which is now R and Bs.
Right, so, yeah, it's that one. It's, you can, I meant to tell you earlier, so you could actually see it, that a lot of it's covered with snow. But they're just piling things up and that, that looks terrible.
Is there any ordinance that says you can't do yard sales on a storage facilities?
We don't have one.
You want to make one?
Heck.
Getting close.
It's terrible, but it's all over. Every place you go, they're doing that.
Yeah, the one across the street from Beeline is, they're always doing yard sales out of that.
And I think that would be up to the owner of the site to determine whether they want to or not.
But we could put it in for future. A little longer. Whatever. Maybe I'm just being...
You know, it's not...
Just being that guy.
Yeah.
People need to sell stuff to.
And, you know, I don't have, it's, there's, as long as they clean it up and don't leave stuff outside. And that's the problem. There's just all the disruptions back there. And the other thing, the new... Because right now, our old ordinance, sign ordinance is any fact, but the new storage unit for the garage, I mean, for the RVs and so on, that was just built and we approved. She has those big signs that are flapping, those banners on either side. Those aren't permitted by our ordinance. So, I mean, they're, for a certain amount of time, it's okay, but...
Right.
How long has it? It's been a long time.
If it's over 30 days, then it's too long.
So that's not on the ordinance, which I didn't realize until I found out.
What was her name?
Okay, so...
The R and B's?
No.
Oh. Nicole. That's what it's called, Nicole, something like that.
The Madison Branch or whatever it's called, so... So you have the business to come up with?
I think I've already said it, really.
Other than that, okay, so new business is a shoreline zoning coming out?
Oh, and I've got...
All righty.
This is the solar array ordinance. Not ordinance, but the checklist. This is the shoreline zoning.
Yeah, Robin and Mark, Jeff is passing out the checklist. I made up for the solar array ordinance. And also, Mark, your, your application, which you've got.
Okay.
For the shoreline zoning. Okay. Board member concerns, huh? Jay? Well, I'm trying to turn to you, Mark, you're not here. Mark, any concerns?
Nope.
Robin?
None.
Okay, excellent, wonderful. Okay, we see, we hopefully see you all on the next meeting on March 11th, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Remember, it's just us now. We weren't able to have the last meeting because Mark, because Frank was sick and only Jenny and I were available and Robin was sick. So we couldn't do any, so we're able to get this all done tonight. So I appreciate your participation. Be safe and enjoy the warm weather we get.
Thank you.
And see you.
Thank you all.
Meetings adjourned.
Bye, Mark, bye, Robin.
7:28.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.